Special City Council meeting for April 17, 2023 to order. Will you call our vote please?
Councilmember Lauing.
Present.
Mayor Koo.
Yes, present.
Councilmember Burt.
Here.
Councilmember Tanaka. Council Vice Mayor Stone.
Here.
Councilmember Vinker.
Here.
Councilmember Lithgow Haines.
Here.
For the record, six present.
Thank you so much. First item that we're going to be addressing is actually closed session. There are two closed session items. One is the conference with city attorney and the subject is Hamilton and High LLC appellate versus City of Palo Alto. And the second one is conference with labor negotiators. Do we have any public comments?
No request to speak.
Very good. And with that, I'll take a motion to go into closed session.
So move.
Second.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Stone, seconded by Councilmember Lauing. Can we take the votes when we get a chance?
Councilmember Burt.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Stone.
Yes.
Mayor Koo.
Yes.
Councilmember Lithgow Haines.
Yes.
Councilmember Tanaka. Councilmember Lauing.
Yes.
Councilmember Vinker.
Yes.
Councilmember Tanaka.
Here.
Oh, it's actually a vote.
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you so much, Madam Clerk. Okay, we're going to go into closed session.
So is reconvening our meeting, our city council meeting. We have, we have a report out for our closed session on item number one, which is the Hamilton and High LLC appellate versus City of Palo Alto. The council has voted to authorize staff to seek review in the California Supreme Court and the Sixth District Court of Appeal Decision, oh, of the Sixth District Court of Appeal Decision in the Hamilton and High versus City of Palo Alto. The council voted as follows. Mayor Ku, Vice Mayor Stone, Councilmember Lauing, Councilmember Burt, Councilmember Lefkot Hames, Councilmember Vinker, yes. Councilmember Tanaka, no. On item number two, that from the closed session, there's nothing to report out. And now we will go to our item number three, which is a study session regarding proposed electric, gas, water, and wastewater July 2023 rate changes. Hello. Good evening, Director Dean.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Ku, Council, Dean Bachelor, Director of Utilities. This utility study session is seeking to inform the full council and the public of the rate discussions and the financial plans that have occurred through March of '23. With the Utility Advisor Board and the Finance Committee, it's intended to allow for a comprehensive understanding of the total customer bill impacts expected to begin in July 1 of '23, should these plans be approved. The report specifically is organized by the following utilities. So a little bit around the electric, the gas, the water, and the wastewater. We'll be sharing the recommended rate changes. CPU had hoped that we could phase these needed rate changes gradually after the pandemic using reserves, but in most utilities, this was no longer possible. For the electric and gas, the winter 22-23 energy supply costs spiked and were not passed through completely to all the customers, and the difference was absorbed from the reserves. The reserves levels in both the utilities and the wastewater collections will be very low by the end of '23, making it impossible to phase the rate increases slowly without bringing revenues even further below the minimum guidelines. Before you tonight, underneath the consent, staff is recommending the council direct staff to proceed with the proposed Proposition 218 notifications of the water wastewater rate changes that were recommended by the Finance Committee in March of '21 of '23. Then later on, underneath your action items, there are two utility reports, one on the electric rates and the financial plans, which the Finance Committee reviewed on the March 21st and approved unanimously for the council to approve. And then on the second, the gas rates and the financial plans, the Finance Committee had one dissenting vote specifically rated around the percentage of the transfer from this fund at the same meeting on the 21st. So with that, we're hoping that we'll seek input from all of you tonight on, on all the utilities, and then hopefully we'll be able to answer most of your questions during the study session so as we get to the action items tonight. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Senior Resource Planner Lisa Baller.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dean, and I'm just sharing my screen here to show you the slides and just give me one moment with that.
Okay, thank you.
So my name is Lisa Baller, and I'm here representing the rates team and the utilities department, and with me is Jonathan Abenschein, Assistant Director, and Micah Babett, Resource Planner, and we also have Carla Daly and Matt Zucca, Assistant Directors, as well as Cara North, joining Assistant Director in the Public Works Department to answer questions.
To provide a brief overview of the presentation, I have six slides, and I will begin by explaining the major drivers of the rate change that propose this year, first focusing on the high energy prices this, from this past winter. Then I'll explain the changes in the median residential bills, as well as presenting an overview of two policy choices before the council tonight and a summary of the rate proposals.
Is reconvening our meeting, our city council meeting. We have, we have a report out for our closed session on item number one, which is the Hamilton and High LLC appellate versus City of Palo Alto. The council has voted to authorize staff to seek review in the California Supreme Court and the Sixth District Court of Appeal Decision, of the Sixth District Court of Appeal Decision in the Hamilton and High versus City of Palo Alto. The council voted as follows. Mayor Ku, Vice Mayor Stone, Councilmember Lowing, Councilmember Burt, Councilmember Livcott-Hames, Councilmember Vinker, yes. Councilmember Tanaka, no. On item number two, that from the closed session, there's nothing to report out. And now we will go to our item number three, which is a study session regarding proposed electric, gas, water, and wastewater July 2023 rate changes. Hello. Good evening, Director Dean.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Ku, Council, Dean Bachelor, Director of Utilities. This utility study session is seeking to inform the full council and the public of the rate discussions and the financial plans that have occurred through March of 23. With the Utility Advisor Board and the Finance Committee, it's intended to allow for a comprehensive understanding of the total customer bill impacts, expected to begin in July 1 of 23, should these plans be approved. The report specifically is organized by the following utilities. So a little bit around the electric, the gas, the water, and the wastewater. We'll be sharing the recommended rate changes. CPU had hoped that we could phase these needed rate changes gradually after the pandemic using reserves. But in most utilities, this was no longer possible. For the electric and gas, the winter 22, 23 energy supply costs spiked and were not passed through completely to all the customers. And the difference was absorbed from the reserves. The reserves levels in both the utilities, in both utilities and the wastewater collections will be very low by the end of 23, making it impossible to phase the rate increases slowly without bringing revenues even further below the minimum guidelines. Before you tonight, underneath the consent, staff is recommending the council direct staff to proceed with the proposed Proposition 218 notifications of the water wastewater rate changes that were recommended by the Finance Committee in March of 21 of 23. Then later on, underneath your action items, there are two utility reports, one on the electric rates and the financial plans, which the Finance Committee reviewed on the March 21st and approve unanimously for the council to approve. And then on the second, the gas rates and the financial plans, the financial, the Finance Committee had won dissenting vote, specifically rated around the percentage of the transfer from this fund at the same meeting on the 21st. So with that, we're hoping that we'll seek input from all of you tonight on, on all the utilities. And then hopefully, we'll be able to answer most of your questions during the study session, so as we get to the action items tonight. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Senior Resource Planner Lisa Baller.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. So my name is Lisa Baller, and I'm here representing the rates team and the utilities department. And with me is Jonathan Abenschein, Assistant Director, and Micah Babbitt, Resource Planner. And we also have Carla Daly and Matt Zucca, Assistant Directors, as well as Cara North, joining Assistant Director in the Public Works Department to answer questions. To provide a brief overview of the presentation, I have six slides, and I will begin by explaining the major drivers of the rate change that propose this year. First, focusing on the high energy prices from this past winter. Then I'll explain the changes in the median residential bills, as well as presenting an overview of two policy choices before the council tonight and a summary of the rate proposals. Then there are four slides in the presentation on our cost containment efforts that I will touch on, but not provide details on. But we'd be happy to answer questions about those items when you have a chance to look them over. There are various trends and key themes that are contributing to the increases or decreases across multiple utilities. And I will describe several of those in a moment. First, I want to focus on the high winter energy prices. The reasons behind this year's rate increases are complex because some trends are increasing rates while others are decreasing rates, leading to situations in some utilities where we may raise rates and yet customers may see a net decrease in their bills or little or no change. The high energy prices this winter were unprecedented, the highest on record. It cost Palo Alto five times as much to buy natural gas this past January compared to last January, and that impacted customer bills in February. Contributing factors include high demand due to cold weather, low amounts of gas and storage, and constraints in supply across the entire West. We've experienced these trends before, and prices have not spiked to the level seen this past winter. So questions remain about the reasons for the price spikes. The city is supporting the governor's call for a federal investigation of the price spikes. And investigations are ongoing by regulatory agencies, including the CPUC and the California ISO. Staff also plans to bring various options to the council for a winter hedging program that could avoid similar price spikes in the future. The good news is that natural gas prices have returned to normal levels, though they remain elevated above the very low levels seen before 2022. The commodity rate in Palo Alto has gone down from $4 per therm this past January to 66 cents per therm for gas in April, which will show up on customers' May gas bills. The city provided various types of help for people affected by high winter gas bills. We arranged payment plans for anyone who wants to pay those high winter bills over a six to eight month period. We've offered free consultations with the city's home efficiency advisor. And for income-qualified customers, we have our Rate Assistance Program and Free Energy Efficiency Improvement Program. While not retroactive, these programs can help offset future gas bills. The city council also approved the rebate program for gas and electric last week. Those rebates are intended to mitigate the extraordinarily high January 2023 gas and electric costs. The rebates provide between $90 and $165 to each residential customer if they have both natural gas and electric services. There's an additional $200 for customers enrolled in the Rate Assistance Program, and customers with utility bill arrearsages greater than 180 days will receive an additional $200. This chart shows the monthly median residential bills by utility. The chart shows both the increase and the decline in gas prices. You can see each utility has a different color, and the gas utility is in yellow. And you can see that it increases in the winter when usage is high and decreases in the summer when usage is lower. But it increased a lot more this past January 2023 than in the prior January 2022. The vertical green line shows the time when the rate proposals that are the subject of this study session tonight will go into effect at the beginning of July. And so you can see the summer bill impact from the June on the left of the green line to July on the right of the green line, and then the forecasted winter impact for 2024. And you can see that the result of the rate changes is not expected to return the median bill to anywhere near where it was in this past winter. And the reason that we're sharing this is not to make light of the rate increases that we're proposing this July, but rather to paint as clear a picture as possible of what these rate increases, how these rate increases will impact customers, given the complexity of this proposal. Now I'll walk through several other trends driving the proposals. So as our energy utility costs decline, we'll be passing those supply cost declines through to our customers through the monthly gas commodity rate adjuster, as well as by deactivating the electric utilities hydroelectric rate adjuster this July. Gas and electric market prices are projected to remain elevated long term, though below the levels from this past winter. Gas and electric transmission costs are rising, as are environmental charges, and these factors will continue to push bills up in the coming years. And the SFPUC, our water supplier, continues to increase water rates as investment in the regional water system continues. The utilities are also recovering from the pandemic. During the pandemic, the city minimized rate increases as much as possible to help customers suffering from economic impacts associated with the pandemic. So in all utilities, revenues are currently below costs. As Dean had mentioned, we did hope that we would be able to phase in the rate increases gradually after the pandemic using reserves. However, that is no longer possible, given that reserve levels are low across most of the utilities. While the effects of the drought are continuing, this has been a very wet year with moderately above-average precipitation throughout California and a record snowpack. These conditions will allow the city to replenish its hydroelectric reserves, which are used to offset higher electric supply costs in dry years and which we will replenish when electric supply costs are lower in wet years like this one. However, those reserves are currently empty and should improve with the hydro conditions from this winter. In the water utility, the governor's recent executive order paves the way to scale back certain drought water use restrictions this summer. And we do expect some rebound in water sales associated with that to help reduce, and that should help reduce the upward pressure on our water rates. There's also a need to increase the capital investment due to aging infrastructure. And wastewater rates are increasing due to the need to rehabilitate the wastewater treatment plant, as well as accelerate the rate of main replacement in our sewer system. Investing in the sewer main replacement in recent years has been below the levels needed to maintain the health of the system long term as construction costs have risen and as we have held rates down during the pandemic. The electric utility is also experiencing aging infrastructure and the need to modernize the grid as the community electrifies. Costs continue to rise across the board. Construction inflation remains a difficult challenge for all public agencies in the Bay Area, and other types of inflation have affected all the utility costs, including salary and benefits costs. The electric utility proposal includes a set of rate changes that will decrease electric bills by 5%. The proposal would deactivate the hydroelectric rate adjuster while increasing base rates for a net decrease to utility bills of 5%. This proposal is made possible by the expected receipt of a $24 million refund from the Bureau of Reclamation of overcharges associated with the Central Valley Project, where the city gets most of its hydroelectric power. This refund is because of the successful result in litigation that the city participated in against the Bureau. This slide provides an overview of two key policy choices we're asking the council to weigh in on that affect rates. The first affects gas rates, and it relates to the percentage to transfer to the general fund under Measure L. This item will be discussed under Agenda Item 14 later tonight. And there's quite a bit of information in that report, as well as a brief presentation on the topic. Staff offered two alternatives to the UAC and the Finance Committee in transferring either 18% or 15.5%. And both the UAC and Finance recommended 15.5%. The second policy decision affects wastewater rates. The wastewater rates currently are sufficient to fund one mile per year of sewer system replacement. But 2.5 miles per year is really needed to replace the sewer mains within their useful life. We used to replace at 2.5 miles per year, but cost inflation, as well as holding budgets down during the pandemic to mitigate rate impacts, has contributed to a lower replacement in recent years. Staff presented various alternatives for increasing the rate of investment to a sustainable level to the UAC and to the Finance Committee. And these proposals varied based on the year by which the utility could begin achieving an average investment rate of 2.5 miles per year. And the UAC and Finance Committee unanimously, both unanimously recommended achieving this investment rate by 2026, fiscal year 26. This table summarizes the proposal for each utility. And then this presentation, we expanded the years that we presented to include fiscal year 2021 and 2022 to show how the rates were held low during the pandemic. Then they increased significantly in fiscal year 2023, particularly in the electric utility. And this is in part due to the activation of the hydroelectric rate adjuster. And it's worth noting that if the 2023 rate increases had been spread across those three years, they would have been approximately annualized at about 4% per year. This year, the red box is the July increases for fiscal year 2024. That's the subject of this, this study session. And we're proposing a 3% increase in the overall bill. In electric, we're proposing a 21% increase to the base electric rate. But with the removal of the hydroelectric rate adjuster, this, we expect bills to decline by 5%. The gas rate changes shown exclude the commodity cost changes in order to hone in on the distribution portion of the gas rate increase, which is a 8% overall increase on the bill. But when netted against the decrease in gas supply rates that are forecasted, we expect people will pay about 13% less for gas in the upcoming fiscal year 24 than they did overall in the last fiscal year 2023. We're proposing a 9% increase in the wastewater rates for the infrastructure replacements and the treatment plant upgrades, and a 6% increase in the water utility. That's made up of a 2% distribution rate increase in combination with a pass-through rate increase from SFPUC. That, what's included in this table is at 11.6%. However, since staff finalized this table, our wholesalers, SFPUC, has reduced its rate increase a little bit to 9.6%, so that water utility increase will go down a little bit to 5%. There's no refuse change this year, but increases are expected in future years, as the table shows. And in the storm drain, the rates increase with CPI in accordance with the ballot measure. And the next slides, as I mentioned, are four slides on cost containment. And our goal really is to minimize the rate increases. It doesn't actually decrease the overall costs. But we have a series of efforts that are outlined on these slides that we're working on and planning to work on in order to keep the increases lower than they otherwise would have been. And with that, that concludes the presentation on this item.
Thank you. So I'm going to encourage that we ask as much questions as possible here, since our item number, I think 14 and 15 are the approval of the financial plans for gas and electric. Water and wastewater is in our consent calendar. But this is another opportunity for the public to hear about this. It was thoroughly discussed at Finance Committee, as well as at the UAC. But I think every opportunity we can to touch the public is very important. So please ask questions and help the public understand this, as well as for the council members that are not on Finance Committee. If you have questions, feel free to ask. Okay. You can turn on your lights if you want to. Oh, as Chair, do you have anything to say, Councilmember Burt, for Finance Committee, from the Finance Committee?
Yeah, I'll just add a few things. Thanks for that report. As staff and the mayor have said, the Finance Committee spent a considerable amount of time and, and thought into, and debate into how to respond to these really changing set of circumstances that have happened in the last year. I think one of the things that we should reflect on is that we, we did in fact essentially freeze utility rates for two years during the disruption of the pandemic. And the first year of that pandemic, there were just wild unknowns about the economic impacts that would occur. By the second year, we still had a lot of uncertainty and a lot of trepidation. But actually, the local economy was overall very strong. The federal subsidies to individuals were really giving most households higher income than they had historically had. But we continued to essentially freeze those rates. And in doing so, we depleted our reserves. Then we get, got this year, two big whammos in the commodity costs. This last winter, the market rate in the Western States for methane gas went through the roof. And we had to have a second adder for our hydroelectric surcharge because of the drought that had been occurring for three years, just accumulating the impact. I think that one of the things that we should be looking at here is any lessons learned. And I think one of the lessons is that we should have probably passed along modest increases at least last year, and maybe a bit the year before, so that we didn't deplete our reserves to this extent. But, you know, hindsight is, is a valuable tool. Then I, I would add that I think that we may see a little more favorable outcomes on our electric commodity costs because of the hydroelectric power being, over the coming year or two, even stronger than what we're currently projecting. But that's still uncertain. But we, we tend to try to budget conservatively, and that includes in this area of projections on where those costs may be. And then I would add that we did, we do have one slide, and I think we discussed it in the, in the meeting, which was that long-term electric transmission and, or electric costs would continue to go up. But actually, I think that what we are facing is a likely, almost a certainty that transmission costs will go up. But we may see that, that increase moderated somewhat by actually lower commodity costs. As we purchase additional electricity as part of our electrification, the costs of our future power purchase agreements for new renewables are likely to be less expensive than what we currently pay on average in our portfolio. And those will be costs that, reductions that won't necessarily, in all likelihood, won't fully offset the increase transmission costs, which are really based upon the investment in the state grid that is necessary. But those are factors that I think we want to bear in mind. And then I, I think we, we were fortunate. I think we were fortunate to get this resolution of the Central Valley Power Authority lawsuit that had been out there for a long while. If we had not had that, then we would have perhaps been facing even tougher decisions tonight. And basically, we've used those funds, as staff has explained, in part to replenish reserves, in part to allow us to go forward with the gas line replacement at this two and a half miles a year that staff really thought that we should move on as quickly as possible. But we were struggling with that in between one Finance Committee meeting when we didn't have those funds. And the next meeting when we did, that was one area where we were struggling. Well, do we have to moderate that pace a little bit? Fortunately, we don't have to do so. And lastly, in a similar way, the amount of gas utility transfer to the general fund, which would normally be 18.5%, we were wanting to reduce that. We were struggling with how that would be able to be done with the diminished reserves that we have. And that Central Valley project really gave us the wiggle room to be able to do that and to recommend that we reduce the amount of transfer from what would ordinarily go to the general fund. So I think that covers several discussion points. I don't know if any of my colleagues have any that I missed.
Vice Mayor Stone or Councilmember Lithgow Hames? No? All right. So why don't we come back and let's go through the utilities that are a little bit less involved, which is the water utility. So if you have any questions on the water utility, please ask it now. So on the water utility, can you go through? Was it the water utility or the wastewater that is the piping that needs to be replaced? I think it's the wastewater, right?
That's right. It's the wastewater utility.
Okay, so we'll come to that a little bit later. But at the, so on water, at the Valley Water, they showed a chart comparing all of the different water wholesalers. And I was wondering if we have one that would show the comparison rates, charges for each of the different water wholesalers and how much they charge.
Are you asking for how much Palo Alto charges its customers for water compared with neighboring cities?
That, and also to have a chart of all the wholesale companies that sell, that provides water to the different cities. So I know there's the San Diego one. There's a few others that I can't name off the top of my head. And I thought I brought it with me, but I guess I didn't. Yeah, it would be. So I know Santa Clara Valley Water, they have the different zones and they charge a different price on those for treated and untreated. Then there's the Orange County. There is San Diego Company. And then, of course, there's the San Francisco PUC. But they all have different rates. And I was wondering if you might be able to speak about how those, how those are determined? And where is, I guess, San Francisco PUC's comparison to all the other companies?
That's a great question. I don't have all of those different wholesalers in front of me, but I can speak a little bit to Valley Water groundwater charges and SFPUC charges for water from its regional water system where Palo Alto purchases all of our potable water. And that is to say that for the zone that Palo Alto would pay if we pumped groundwater and paid Valley Water for that pumped water, that rate is lower currently. But if you look at the rate projection, it's actually projected to increase to a level higher than the SFPUC rate sometime in the next, I think, five years or so. So if you compare the projection for the SFPUC rate compared with the Valley Water rate, there, it's lower now, but then it's going to be higher in the future to pump groundwater.
Okay. And maybe at some point we might get a chart showing the different rates that they charge, that the different wholesale companies charges. So at least we have a comparison to see.
I don't have that prepared tonight, but we would be happy to pull together that information and compare the wholesalers that you mentioned. We do have a chart of the rates that Palo Alto charges compared with neighboring agencies, if that's part of your question.
Okay, yeah, that'll be, was it in here?
No, I have it as a separate backup slide.
Also, you know, a lot of times, what makes up the charge or the rate that is charged to Palo Alto residents or to businesses here? The rate, wherever the rate is, is made up of many different. There's the transmission or there's, I know I'm going into electric right now or gas, but what makes up the rate for water?
The wholesale rate that we pay?
Well, no, for the rate that we charge customers.
Oh, the rate that we charge customers. Yes, great question. About half of the rate goes to pay for the water that Palo Alto purchases from the wholesaler, SFPUC. And the other half goes to pay for the distribution system, the maintenance and upkeep of the distribution system. So any capital work that needs to be done, as well as any staff that needs to do the work on the system within, within the distribution system within the city of Palo Alto.
So, so essentially, that is, there's no profit that comes out of it. Whatever is being charged to us in addition to operational, such as maintenance, capital improvements and all that is part of that rate charge that is charged to customers.
That's right. This is a cost-based rate. So we charge the rates based upon the costs to maintain the system and do any maintenance that's needed and in order to keep reserves at a healthy level.
Okay. And can you tell us a little bit about Proposition 218?
So for part of Proposition 218, we're going to be doing noticing. So that's why this is a consent item tonight. There's certain requirements for public notice. So we're going to be, right after this meeting, as soon as we can, we'll be issuing the public notice and then having a public hearing in June. I think it's June, the council meeting on June 17th in order to take any feedback, take protests from customers. And then we'll look at the number of protests and determine if the rate increase can proceed.
So essentially, the public can protest this rate that is being proposed?
The water and wastewater.
And wastewater.
Yes. And so that's why that's a consent item tonight. We're asking for your, for the council's approval to move forward with that public hearing and public noticing process in the coming months and returning to council in June.
Thank you.
Thank you for that question.
Councilmember Tanaka?
Yeah, thank you for your work on this. A few quick questions, one for the mayor, which is, is there also public comment on the side or no? Mayor? Is there a public comment?
There will be public comment, but we're going to go through questions first.
Just curious. Okay. So in general, I agree with the idea of transferring less from the general fund. So how much less are we transferring percentage and also in terms of millions?
Jonathan Abenschein, Assistant Director in Utilities. The two options that we're providing, two alternatives we're providing tonight, and of course, council can approve other options, are either the full 18% transfer as set by Measure L. And the other option is 15.5% Alternative 2 in the charts. As for the dollar amounts, I'm going to need to look that up. It'll take me a minute.
Okay, I have other questions. Why don't you go ahead? I'm on a shot clock here, so, okay. And then, do you guys have a graph or a table that shows the percentage of the rates? Like, so what percentage of our rates come that the transfers make up? Because directly, if we weren't transferring that money to the general fund, our rates would be lower. And so do you, do you have a breakdown showing our rates and how much of those rates the transfers makes up?
I don't have a chart showing that.
Oh, do you have the table? Can you tell me what the figure is?
I can give you the, I can give you the figure on the, on the transfer amounts. So for an 18% transfer, so I'm looking at packet page 499. And and in that chart, you can see the
Can someone, can the clerk bring it up on the screen?
I'm sorry?
I'm asking the clerk if she could bring it up on the screen.
Oh, packet page 499. I think I could share that. Hold on. Nope, thank you. Yeah, so in the table, FY 2024, Alternative 1 is 8.9 million. And that's an 18% transfer. 15.5% transfer is $7.7 million.
And then to my second question, which is, what percentage of the rates does the transfer make up?
Yeah, so I don't have that, I don't have that in this chart. We'd have to look at the gross gas utility revenues and compare it to the transfer. But you can see the so it depends on the year you look at. In the top line of this table, you can see the gross gas utility revenues from two years prior to FY 2024. And so, you know, in the ballpark of $8 million, it's ranging from 5% to 10%.
Okay. That's a pretty big difference, but okay, so if you take 5, so 5% to 10% of the rate that our rate payers pay goes towards the transfer. So theoretically, if we weren't doing transfer at all, which we are doing, our rates could be about 5% to 10% lower. Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay. And, and it's just gas or is it also electric?
In electric, the percentage is smaller. But there's also a transfer in electric.
So what percentage of the rates for electric do the transfers make up?
It's in the ballpark of 8%.
Okay. Now, are you two, are you able to zero in more on the percentage of the gas rate?
I'm sorry.
Are you able to, because 5% to 10% is like 2X difference. Are you able to narrow down the range?
I could, but it'll take me a few minutes if you want me to work on that.
Yeah, why don't you go ahead and then I'll ask other questions. The third question here is for the rates, what percentage of staff costs make up the rates?
Which utility?
I'd actually love to see a breakdown for all of them, if you have it.
For water and wastewater, it's about 17% to 20%.
17% to 20% for wastewater?
And water, but I don't have an exact number in front of me. I'd be happy to look that up for you.
Okay, so 17% to 20% of our, of our rates, of what our rate payers pay is staff cost. And for electric and gas, you guys don't know at this point. Is that right?
We would be happy to look it up. We don't have it readily available.
Okay. What would be really neat is to actually have like a little chart here that shows for all the different rates, what percentage of it is the transfer, what percentage is the staff cost? You know, these commodity costs, we don't have too much control over. But we do have control over how much we transfer. And we do have control over how much our staff cost is. And that's why I think those are relevant and important. And so, in fact, I think we should put those on the bill for everyone, so everyone could see what percentage of their bill, of the rates actually come from staff cost as well as a transfer. Okay, so maybe as you guys find those numbers, the other question for you is, do you guys have a comparison to the current PG&E rates? For all the different rates? So we can see like apples-to-apples comparison.
Yes, we have comparison charts for all the utilities. If you tell us which utility you want to take a look at, we can
Can we go through each one of them?
Show you the, we can show you that. Which would you like to look at first?
You could pick.
I'm sorry?
You could pick whichever one you want to show first. And then when you have the other numbers in terms of percentage of staff cost up for the other ones, that'd be great.
That's something we'll have to get back to you later offline. We don't, that's not something we're going to be able to calculate at the meeting here tonight. I can tell you that the, the gas utility transfer for FY 2024, for Alternative 2, the smaller transfer, is 11.6%.
11.6, okay. Okay, so 11.6% of the gas is actually the transfer. So if we weren't doing that directly, the gas rate could be 11.6% lower.
It would be ballpark there, a little bit less than that, but.
Okay. 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 Actually, where do we get this slide?
So
Is it on the, is our slide, is it in our slide deck?
This is a backup slide and it's in our, it's in the financial plans. So we can get you the packet page where the, where you can find that.
How do I find that?
Yep. We can get you that.
The chart that I'm showing is in Consent Item 10. Jonathan is looking up for the page number. But this shows a comparison for Palo Alto and neighboring communities. This shows Palo Alto's current residential rate compared with what a customer would pay in several, an equivalent amount that customer would pay for wastewater service on a monthly basis in the neighboring communities.
Okay. And so what page number is it? It's 56. My slide thing only goes up to page 10.
Right, so where you want to look for the wastewater is page 13 of the wastewater financial plan. And to get the wastewater financial plan, you'll want to go to
Oh, hey, guys, actually, I see them over. I don't know, Mayor, I have more questions, but I don't want to go over time.
You know what, if this is a study session, and I think this is a pretty important subject to make sure that the public understands it. So if you want to continue and finish up, please do so.
Sure, no problem. I'll do that then.
If I could add too, real quick, Councilmember Tanaka, on your question that you proposed to staff last week on Thursday, was sent back to the entire council that in those links that was on that email, all these rates that you're asking for, these comparisons for electric, for PG&E, also for the water, for the wastewater and the gas with PG&E, they're all linked on that email.
Okay, which email was that?
The email that was sent to the entire council last Friday, I believe.
What was the subject of it?
It was your question. It was the Council Questions, number nine and number 10.
So, okay, I'll go look for that then.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Let's see. Do you have the slides for the other one too? Or you have, do you have it for electric, gas? Like water?
Yeah, we could show gas, so.
Yeah, so this slide shows the at different usage levels. It shows the bill comparisons for Palo Alto compared with PG&E for gas.
So it shows that we're lower in winter but higher in the summer. Is that basically what you're saying?
Yes, that's right. But at the bottom, you could see that the, when you calculate the entire bill for the year, it's about 11% lower.
Okay. Wait, so this is for gas, right?
Right, so let's go to electric.
Okay.
And this slide has the comparison, but the, Mike, are you able to give us the median for the year?
Actually, can you go back to the gas one? Do we also have that for Santa Clara as well?
Santa Clara doesn't run a gas utility, so the PG&E comparison holds for Santa Clara on that one.
Okay, sorry, can this go for that? I thought there would be a Santa Clara, but since there's no gas, why don't you go on to the next slide? Okay, so Santa Clara, so they also have their own electric like us. And they own it, right? So they're not renting it like PG, like with PG&E, you'd be like, now he's like essentially renting it from PG. Um, and they own it, right? So they're not renting it like PG, like with PG&E, you'd be, like now these, like essentially renting it from PG&E versus owning it by Santa Clara and Palo Alto. So it looks like, um, Santa Clara is, in almost in all cases, if I'm mistaken here, if I'm not mistaken here, it's, it's all, it's lower in all, all cases, is that right?
Yeah, that's, that's correct. I think the, one of the primary differences between us and Santa Clara is they have a, a lot of large data center loads, so they're able to spread their costs over a larger share of customers. And that's the primary difference.
I see.
A, as well as some local generation that they have in Santa Clara.
Okay.
The, the key there, just to expand on that, Santa Clara has a natural gas fueled, uh, generation plant within the city. Uh, not only, uh, as a result, uh, generating the gas locally, but avoiding the transmission charges that we incur in, uh, using the statewide grid in having that electricity that's generated, for example, from solar in the Central Valley, uh, trans, uh, transmitted, uh, here to Palo Alto.
Okay, okay, great. Uh, let's see, was there another one? Do you have trash too?
I do not have bill comparison charts for refuse, no.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, so the, uh, just coming back to electric here briefly, um, on an annual basis, Palo Alto's, uh, rates are forty-six percent lower than a PG&E customer, uh, at that medium, median usage level.
But I would also expect that because we own our utilities. So, you know, we're not having to pay for that extra distribution cost, and we put capital into the program, so I would assume that.
Well, I, I know we've had this conversation previously, Councilmember Tanaka, but, uh, you should be aware that the PG&E rates do fully amortize the capital costs into the ongoing rate structure.
Okay, well, we're gonna have to read this agree on this one. Um, but, um, yeah, I would expect our rates to be lower than a PG&E rate. Um, okay, um, and then, uh, let's see. You know, in the past, I've brought the question, and last time I heard, the capital cost of the wastewater plant was kind of fixed in time, not based on usage. It was fixed according to whatever, whatever we agreed upon long time ago, and not upon current usage. And has that been resolved, or what's the plan to get that resolved?
Hi, this is Karen North, Assistant Director. Uh, the discussions that we had was predominantly when we were, uh, having council approve the large capital work for the secondary treatment plant upgrade that just, um, council just approved in December. We are currently working with our partners and trying to get a consultant on board to update our long-range facility, facility plan because it's based on a agreed-upon capacity of the treatment plant that was determined many years ago. Um, so we will be coming back to council once we have that consultant on board. Uh, we're planning on coming to council with a, uh, basically, uh, informational reports. Let them know what's, what was going to be included in that, um, RFP and in that consultant work, hopefully before June.
June, okay, great. And, um, uh, uh, the other question I had is geothermal. So, you know, we have the geothermal item, and, you know, in general, I like the idea of geothermal. But, um, it's, it seems to be, unless I'm reading the report wrong, seems to be kind of expensive, right? And at a time when our bills are kind of high, I just wondered the wisdom of going for something like that, um, versus trying to seek lower cost energy sources.
Yeah, I think I would, I would agree with you two years ago that it was expensive, but what we've seen in the, the power market, prices have been rising pretty drastically. Um, and so when we first were given the opportunity to evaluate the project, we started from that position and we reached a different conclusion that, um, we, we expect to see quite a bit of benefit from that, and that's more a reflection on the state of power costs right now in the, in the greater market. So as of today, it looks like a really good deal to Palo Alto. And what happens over the next twelve years of that contract, uh, remains to be seen, but as of today, it looks like a really good deal.
Okay, um, and my last question here is commercial rates. Um, you know, I've, I've had a few office hours with some of the, to you on the commercial side, and there's been relief on the residential side, but not much on the commercial side. And so I guess what's the, um, what's the, uh, plan there? And I, I don't know if all the, it looks like all of the comparisons you're showing are on the residential side, but some of the commercial, especially restaurants have, which are both low-margin businesses, have been really struggling. And so I don't know if staff could talk about, what are you guys doing there, and how do we, um, now enable these small struggling businesses to survive?
Um, so I think we are regularly reviewing our rates, um, to see whether, to see whether there are, uh, adjustments that make sense to make. Um, and I think with the, you know, with the city's focus on, um, helping smaller businesses, we're, uh, expanding our, um, efficiency programs, for example, for businesses to help them, um, save money on their electric bills. We have really stepped up our engagement with small businesses while also, um, reviewing the, the, uh, rate designs for a wider diversity, um, to see what, uh, you know, what opportunities there are there.
Yeah, because one of the comments I got was, um, where there's a fixed charge, even there's no usage, like people were shut down because of the construction downtown or COVID or whatever. And so some of these small businesses were having to pay this, like hundred dollars a month, I forgot what it was, some, some sort of fixed fee, even though they weren't using anything. And, you know, this at a time when they're making no money and they're losing their shirts, and so there, there's a lot of kind of frustration there.
Yeah, thank you. Um, those are the types of issues that we're looking at. Um, the other thing that we did during that, uh, during the time with COVID was to suspend, um, dunning and give people, uh, a lot of time to pay off those bills as well. Um, but yes, those sorts of issues are the ones we're looking for to help encourage small businesses.
So I think, I like how you guys did the residential comparison, but probably a commercial comparison's good. And in fact, you know, I advocate that you guys publish on the bill so people could feel good about, you know, what they're paying. Thanks.
Okay, um, so if, I don't see any lights, but we can go to wastewater if there's any questions or comments there. Um, I know that you've been replacing the, um, pipes, right? So what is the remaining number that we have to replace? Miles?
I believe it's a hundred and thirty, a hundred and thirty-eight miles remaining.
And so I heard the discussion, if I remember correctly, that the pipes are hundred years old? That is when the preferred time to replace?
Yes, that, in Palo Alto, that's our engineering team's, uh, estimate of a, of a, uh, of a average, uh, life, useful lifetime of the pipe.
And so every year we do two point five miles, but then now it's down to one mile replacement?
In the past, we had an average rate of two point five miles, but due to recent, uh, cost increases and, um, uh, the pandemic impacts of trying to maintain lower rate increases, the average rate of replacement has dropped to about one mile on average in recent years.
Okay, and, and you said earlier it's due to construction costs and, um, supply chain costs and all that, right?
Replace one mile has gone up a lot, and so you can't get as many miles replaced with your, your same budget.
Thank you, and so with the increase, the percentage that, uh, of the rate increase, approximately in dollar amount, how much would that be? Can you, is that possible to?
The increase is approximately one point eight million dollars in the, uh, 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 for that nine percent increase in wastewater. Is that what you're asking about?
No, I was asking the rate, the rate increase to customers.
Oh, excuse me, it's a four dollar, uh, per month increase for residential customers. Let me show you a slide. So this slide shows the residential customer, what a residential customer is currently paying of the forty-four dollars and sixty-two cents a month, and the proposal would go to forty-eight dollars and sixty-four cents. So it's approximately a four dollar increase per month for the sewer bill.
And this one doesn't fluctuate, right?
For residential customers, it does not fluctuate, but for non-residential customers, it does.
Okay, okay, thank you. So I don't see any more lights for wastewater, so I guess we can go to gas and electric. I hope there's questions there. If not, then I will go again. So, um, can you help us all understand what goes into how you determine the rates for gas, the gas utility?
So the gas utility has the cost to, um, purchase the gas as well as the cost. It, it's similar to what I was describing for water in the sense that there's the cost to maintain and operate and replace the gas system in the city of Palo Alto and the distribution system, as well as the cost of purchasing gas. And the cost of purchasing gas is passed through to customers on a monthly basis. And the cost for the distribution system is really what we're estimating here, um, and for the distribution system.
Um, but it also says that there's the cost of the gas supply cost, right, which is about sixty percent, uh, in FY twenty twenty-three, then there's also, uh, transporting it to Palo Alto, as well as environmental charges and distribution-related costs that comes to about forty percent. So I guess I'm trying to, uh, uh, I guess, in part to our customers, that it's not just a rate that we come up with. It's based on all these kind of different costs that is, um, accumulated to come up to the rate that it, the customers are being charged. So when there is a, uh, post on Nextdoor that says utilities is going up by nine percent or something like that, it's not just as simple as that. There is a lot more that goes into how that rate is determined. Um, I, I guess that's what I'm trying to kind of make it clear for customers here in Palo Alto.
Thank you for that. And I'm showing a slide that tries to provide a little bit more of that detail that you're talking about, about the complexity of the gas utility. And on the left, it shows in green the distribution costs that I was mentioning, the capital investment in the distribution system, as well as other costs, operations costs for the system. And then on the right side, in the various blue colors, it shows the different components that you just ran through on the supply side. Um, and the various portion of the total for each of those components.
Thank you for that. And then at this point, I think with the, um, proposed increase is mostly to recover the reserves that was depleted during COVID.
It's partly to recover the reserves that were depleted over time, over the next several years. Um, but also to cover the increasing costs, uh, of administration, of salaries and benefits, of, uh, rising construction, all the various costs that go into the distribution system for the gas utility.
And I guess, um, you know, moving forward, given what had happened this last winter, the spike in the, um, the rate, how can we reassure our customers that n- next winter, not, something like this is not gonna happen again? I guess, you know, receiving letters and, uh, phone calls from many of our customers, I, what they're asking for is some notification when this kind of thing is gonna happen, so they can appropriate the amount of funds that they have, you know. Oftentimes, they're taking it from one bucket to another in order to make sure they have enough funds to pay for this. So, um, I, I guess what are the reassurances that we can provide our customers? That come next, next year, it's gonna, um, be a little bit more expected so that they have an expectancy that it won't go, like you said, five times higher.
We can't assure that it won't happen again, but based upon the current projections, we do not have any, the market projections are not, are not indicating that it would occur again. It's just in the long term that the cost may be a little bit higher. And.
Yeah, so, uh, the other thing that we're, we're planning to, so, so I will, I'll just reinforce what, what, um, Lisa was saying, that these, these were unprecedented and extreme gas, uh, prices. You don't, you don't start, uh, investigations over, over routine winter spikes, so. Um, but that doesn't mean that they couldn't happen again, and so we're, we're, um, looking at some potential winter hedging strategies that we can bring, uh, to council, and, um, oh, those will always come with a cost, but we can take a look at those and decide whether we're, um, comfortable with the cost versus bene, versus risk management trade-off. And I think we've taken to heart the, um, concerns of, of our residents about notification. And I think over the few months, we developed, uh, a much more, uh, highly honed communication on the gas rates, and so we would, um, if we were seeing something like that occur again, we would, uh, we would, we would bring that back out and make sure we were communicating it.
Thank you so much. Um, I think that's about it. Um, I think I just wanted to make clear where is all the, how the rates are determined and make sure that people understand that. Uh, Councilmember Burt?
Yes, uh, so I'd just like to follow on to it, both your question about how we can try to, um, avoid the extreme spikes that we saw this year, uh, and, uh, and to what, uh, Jonathan was alluding to, uh, as well. First, uh, the volatility that happened this winter really doesn't have a precedent. It was greater than anything in decades, maybe ever that we, we have. But second, the city until about twenty twelve, John, I think you had looked this up, um, had had a, um, or maybe it was Dean, a, a laddering structure, uh, where we bought longer-term gas contracts at fixed rates. And to do that, you pay a little bit above the, uh, the spot price. But, uh, we would buy, I don't know, was it, uh, different terms of contracts? And it would average that out. Um, during a period of a, uh, two or three years, when fracking really drastically the, increased the supply of natural gas, and the cost of natural gas went down to historically low levels, uh, at least at that time historically low. They even went, uh, lower further subsequently. Um, we went from having gas rates that were nominally below PG&E to ones that were above because we had locked ourselves in, uh, in two and three-year contracts, and the spot market had dropped and kept falling. And there was, uh, an important policy decision by the council as to whether to eliminate this laddering approach. And, um, uh, I, at the time, some of my colleagues said, well, uh, you know, look at the history, if we had been spot price, we'd be paying less. And my argument was that that works right up until prices go up, and then it doesn't work. And I advocated at the time that we look at a hybrid approach, a combination of spot pricing and laddering. And we didn't go that direction. I think what's happened this last winter really tells us we should at least seriously reconsider that approach. And I don't know if, I think that's part of what John was maybe alluding to, maybe on the horizon. But I just wanted to be more clear about the historic context and that I certainly encourage us to at least have a very serious policy discussion on whether we should take that approach again, or some version of it.
Thank you for that. Uh, I, I think I was trying to get to that, you know, um, knowing that there is that contract that you have to commit to, but can it be, um, changed when we see time is, um, that there's gonna be a change in, um, wholesale pricing and so forth. So I think Councilmember Burt just answered that. Um, can you tell us a little bit more about the, um, recommendation for, I mean, the alternatives, one and two for measure L, um, going from eighteen percent and perhaps adopting a fifteen point five percent?
Sure, I have a couple of slides. Uh, so the, the, um, So the, the, the policy choice on how much to transfer to the general fund is, some, we're looking for feedback from you folks on, and later in this agenda. So Measure L passed last year and it changed the, it changed the general fund transfer methodology for the gas utility specifically to a percentage of gross gas utility revenues. And specifically, it said, the, the city will transfer 18% unless the council decides to transfer a lower amount. And that gives you the opportunity, the opportunity to react to changing conditions for the gas utility, like the unusual volatility that we've had over the last year that's affected our revenues. So you can see in the chart on the right here, how much the general, how these revenues affect the general, a general fund transfer. The blue bar shows a transfer over the next several years of 18% of gross gas utility revenues. And that's the, so the Measure L bases the transfer on the gross gas utility revenues from two years prior. So for example, the spike that you see in FY 25 is based on the spike in revenues from FY 23 this year, which had the, the very high winter price spikes. We also introduced an alternative where, with a lower transfer. So in FY 2023, 18, an 18% transfer is, is very similar to the pre Measure L transfer amount. But in FY 2024, you can see that, that, so the, the orange line shows what the, what the transfer amount would be if you were to transfer a lesser amount in FY 2024 and in 25 and 26, 15.5% in 2024 and lower amounts in 2025, 2026. And that approximates a CPI increase over multiple years. Can I get the next slide, please? And so the rate projections that we've been showing you are based on this alternative to the lower transfers. And you can see that, so while the general fund transfer, it's a percentage of revenues, it doesn't drive rate increases. But because it is a percentage of revenues, a higher transfer does translate into, into, you do have to, rates do have to be higher to make that transfer. And you can see in the top table, the rates that would be needed to transfer 18% of revenue for the next three years. In the bottom right, you can see the, the percentages of, the percentage transfer, percentage of gross gas utility revenue that is underlying those rate changes. So those are the two alternatives we calculated and other alter, other percentages are possible, but those are the two we calculated. The Utility Advisory Commission recommended alternative two. There was one dissenting vote that was unrelated to the transfer. And then the Finance Committee also recommended alternative two. There was one dissenting vote that was related to the transfer. You know, I think looking at, I think that, that, that committee member, that council member was looking for potential consideration of an 18% transfer in FY 2024 instead.
And mostly with alternative two is in order to continue to keep rates as low as possible without increasing.
Alternative one and alternative two are two alternatives that staff's introduced and calculated, and we're looking for feedback from the board, the commissions, the committee and the council, and a decision from the council on what direction they'd like to go. Alternative two does keep the general fund transfer at about a CPI increase per year, which was what it's historically, that's about the rate it's historically increased in the gas utility.
So with alternative two, the transfer itself, would it still be sufficient to address what we had initially said for services and so forth? Will it be sufficient to cover that? I guess that's something.
It's very similar to the amount that we were discussing as a city when, when Measure L was on the ballot last year. So I, I think the estimates were around $7 million to $8 million.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Councilmember Lauing?
Yeah, just a couple of comments. I've seen this before, a few weeks, months back on the UAC as on the liaison there. Is, is good, good work from the start from, from Dean and the UAC and how this was wrestled. And then obviously continuing good work at the Finance Committee. But the starting point, as staff said tonight, is the reason why there's any proposal in here is because revenues do not cover costs. So that's basic business of a city or, or anything else. And that's where all this comes from. And the one thing I just want to pass on from UAC, the, the nights that we, they, they discussed it, was that, you know, the urge, a focus on the dollar amount of an increase in a particular utility. And of course, the overall bill, not the percentages, which I think also the, the mayor was, was addressing. Because, and, and the example you just gave is you, it's going to cost four bucks more for, for wastewater. That sounds more palatable than 9%. Oh, my gosh. But the only other thing I want to mention in this regard, because again, the mayor's talking about having our residents, including ourselves, understand this, is that everything's going up. I mean, we've got inflation, we've got labor costs, we've got transportation costs, we have serious infrastructure costs in all of these areas, and we also have to plan for more of a transition to electric from gas. So all these things are, are here. It's not just passing on the cost of the commodity and marking it up and using, using the money somewhere else. So I just, I really salute all the effort that's been done on this to date. I do have one question I addressed maybe to the, to the Finance Committee, but clearly we wanted to replace a, a lot of the very depleted reserves and that, that was done. Was there debate about, well, maybe we shouldn't quite replace them so much because then we can keep the, the rates even lower? Or did your earlier comment, Councilmember Burt, suggest that you kind of went as far as you could, given that we didn't pay any, that we subsidized electricity for the last two years? So just thinking, you know, they're in much better shape. There's still a couple of them that are, that are in, in danger, particularly the CIPs, as we'll see later in the agenda. But was there any consideration given to, well, let's just take some more out of the reserves?
Well, not taking more out of the reserves. I think what we have is that we are not immediately fully replenishing them. Maybe staff could review that. So we're, we're moving in the right direction, but we're not in a single year replenishing our reserves. And maybe they could speak a little bit to that right now.
We could show a couple of the slides. It's really the gas and the electric utilities that are particularly in rough shape. And we actually are already, I think, pushing those, pushing in those utilities to, I think we proposed plans that gradually brought those reserves back up to the minimum levels. Get slide 87. So here's the gas utility, for example. You can see in this chart, the, the, the gray lines, the solid gray lines are the minimum and maximum guidelines for those operations reserve. The red line is the actual reserve amount. And by the end of FY 23, we're expecting it to be not only below the minimum guidelines, but even below the risk assessment level. And I think what we've, what we've given is the, the lowest rate trajectory that we can manage without letting those reserves go even further below the, the risk assessment. And there's a similar story with electric as well.
That's, that's good knowledge for our, our residents to have in terms of how much we're stretching and still taking some risk. And I know we have risk mitigation in there too, so we're not going to be in trouble. So thanks for that.
Councilmember Vinker?
Thank you, Mayor Koo. And I really wanted to thank the team here tonight because you have a slide for everything. It's like there's an app for that, there's a slide to that. And I, I want to thank you for all the work that you've done before tonight to, to help us understand. And I'll just say that as I've been listening to the discussion here, I just keep checking off the questions I had because you've answered them well. So I really just wanted to, I mean, I have some further comments about the 15.5%, but I'll wait until that agenda item comes up to make those. I did just want to echo, however, Councilmember Burt's comments about the, the rates and looking into prospectively some, you know, various means to hedge them, whether we take these two approaches and learn from the past about that. Because we can see how even with that 18% transfer, that, that chart with the blue bars that are bouncing up, there's a legacy effect even of, of that spike. And so I appreciate the efforts that, and the thought that you're going to put into that as well. Because it's critical because it hits, it hits our most vulnerable, the hardest, low income people, seniors, people on fixed income, and well, middle income, there, there, there's a big spike. And so, but to your point, you know, it's also triggered an investigation, so hopefully we won't see that again. But if, if there is even not that severe of a spike, but something that's hard for people to absorb, it'll be nice to have some mechanism to guard against that. So, thank you.
Vice Mayor Stone?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just talking about the, the transfer real quick and the discussion at, at finance, at least from my perspective, my only concern with the 15.5% transfer, I raised this during the Finance Committee discussion, was just the possibility of a premature reduction in the general fund. It's, it's about $1.2 million and staff can correct me if I got that, that figure wrong. And so my concern, kind of going about to enter budget discussions early next month, essentially would be maybe our inability to restore some critical services by just losing that 1.2 million in, in general fund revenue. And I know we're, we're trying to balance these, these kind of competing interests of trying to keep rates low for, for our rate payers while also trying to, to provide as many city services that we're frequently hearing a demand for, for many of those to return. So that kind of my concern and, and fear is within the budget discussions, if we find ourselves needing to find that additional 1 million or so in order to be able to restore library hours or whatever it may be, are our hands tied then because of this discussion? And so I guess just kind of one question for, for staff, maybe this is more Assistant Director Nozai, if she's, if she's on, would be if council passes this plan and this transfer, is it possible at the time of the budget that if we do find ourselves in that scenario where this loss of revenue is preventing some service restoration? Is that, is that something that we can go back and, and change at that time?
She is on.
She's here.
All right. Go ahead, Ms. Nozai.
So thank you for the question, Councilmember Vice Mayor Stone. I'm pausing only because I actually think this might be more a question with our utilities rate team. There are noticing requirements, and so ultimately this would require a change in the calculation for the gas rate. And therefore, should council take an action this evening and wish to reverse it, you would then need to likely repeal what you do tonight and then replace. So if you were to do it in that order, I guess. So utilities folks, can you help me remember the timing on noticing and when you would need that final response by?
Jonathan Abenschein, I would, so I think tentatively, we could say that if council were to approve those gas rates tonight, that they could change that decision in May, there aren't noticing requirements for the gas utility. So I think we would have, if, it would be good to know if that possibility were, you know, that there were the potential for that, because we would moderate our, our messaging around the rates. But much of the messaging that we do comes in June and July, when people are going to see these changes on their bills. So I, I think that we could probably manage it if there were a change. And I think we do need to check with the attorney's office as well on that.
And do you have, since we're, we're seeing so much great data on the, on the slides, and I, I believe this was presented during the Finance Committee, but I don't recall seeing it tonight, showing the difference for the rate payer with the difference of the 15.5 to 18?
Yeah, we should have a slide. We, we should be able to give you a number on that. Could you give us one, give us one minute and we'll come, come back with that answer?
Great, thank you. Then Madam Mayor, I'm, I'm done for now.
Councilmember Lifkat Himes?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think that number we're looking for is 1.2 million divided by the number of users divided by 12 months. Come on, okay. I want to thank staff. I'm, I have the privilege of serving on the Finance Committee where we obviously had a very robust discussion on these subjects. And I just want to commend staff at all levels for their diligence and their brains. It's really been a pleasure to be part of these conversations. I think one of our main jobs as council members is to help remind our neighbors that in the pandemic, we were charged less for our utilities than the cost it took to provide them. I think we have to continually send that message with confidence so that people understand that circumstance. The council and public also need to understand that we're a city that leads when it comes to sustainability. We are 100% carbon neutral and our rates are 40% below PG&E. That is a fantastic thing. And we are a city continually asking, how do we improve our local grid reliability as we move toward electrification, which includes increasing the size of wires and improving connector poles and doing a better job in the vegetation aspect? We can't know what will happen with commodity prices, but we've demonstrated an ability to respond quickly with a rebate when things are out of control. And I voted on the Finance Committee in favor of the 15.5% gas transfer as opposed to the full 18, because in a year with a gas and electric spike, a budget surplus from the year prior, a big settlement on overcharges, I am very aware of the public's perception that somehow we're not making appropriate use of our budgetary dollars. And I do want the public to feel confident that we're trying to balance restoration and replenishment needs with the real dollar impact to their pocketbook. And ultimately, I was persuaded that the monthly difference to an individual household for a 15.5% transfer versus an 18% transfer was relatively small. And that therefore it behooved us to just move a little bit more slowly here with that gas transfer in light of these other factors that I have mentioned. Thank you very much.
So, yes, Mr. Abenschein?
Yeah, as Councilmember Lifkat Himes mentioned, the calculation's pretty quick and easy. It's about 60 cents. It's a 9% versus 8% and 8% is about a $5.20 increase on the bill. And 9% is about a $5.85, 80 cent increase on the bill.
But so sorry, that, that, the total difference between the 15.5% and the 18% on a monthly bill is?
60 cents per month.
60 cents per month. So that's what I thought, given such a small number, giving us an additional 1.2 million to work with in the budget season was, was worth it. So can't even buy two 99 cent tacos at Jack in the Box for that. I'm not paid for by them.
Okay, Councilmember Tanaka, and then we're going to go to public comments.
Okay, great, thank you. Yeah, so I, I really appreciate my colleagues' comments on this and of course staff's work. And I know it's easy to say it's all out of, out of our control, you know, inflation, inflation's hitting everyone. And that's partially true, but I need, I think we need to separate this out from the stuff we can't control, like commodity prices, price of copper, price of water, price of electricity, and the things that we can control, like how much do we transfer? How much, how much of an increase do we have to our staffing, our hedging techniques? So as staff mentioned, 11.6% of our gas rate is actually the transfer to our general fund. It's not commodity cost, it's not distribution, it is simply dollars that we take from our, our utilities into our general fund. And then for electric is 8%. So that, those are not insignificant figures. And then, no, staff also said that 17 to 20% of the cost, for instance, of wastewater is staff cost. And, and so when we give raises that are way beyond the rate of inflation, we are making the problem worse. That's something that we as council do control. The one thing I do like what, what staff is doing, and I, I just want to, I didn't applaud you guys for this, but I do like that you guys look at hedging techniques. I think that's actually really important. It's a good technique. I think that's one way for us to probably dampen some of the, the wild swings that we get and the things that we do not control. But, and the reason why I, I really push hard on this utilities is because I, I'm just, but every week I have office hours and people tell me about how much they're struggling with these utility rates. I know for some of them, some people up here, you know, $10, $5, no big deal. But there's people in our community who are really struggling. There are people who are less There are people who are less fortunate, there are people who are barely here. And so I think we should think of them as well. I know from some people's perspective, this is nothing, right? But that's not everyone's perspective. And so I think we should just be conscious of that and realize that this is hard for some people. So thank you guys for your consideration.
Okay, let's go to public comments.
Our first speaker is Debbie Midels, followed by Sharia Vandhar Hand.
This is public comments for the study item on utility rates. Thank you.
Actually, my comment was more general comments. If you want particulars on the utility rates, I don't know if other, I think everybody was going to speak in general comments.
Our next speaker is Sharia Vardhan.
No, that's the same thing. Okay.
I think Andrea Gara is also on public comments, not on the agenda, right?
That's correct.
Okay. So I guess there is no public comments. Oh, there is.
Our next speaker is Lynn Chiappella. Su Chan, you should be able to speak.
Mine is also public comments. Gosh, sorry.
All right, no, we have no request to speak.
Very good. Is there any closing comments from my colleagues here on this item? If there isn't, I just want to say thank you so much for your presentation. It was pretty thorough, what you presented at the Finance Committee. So thank you so much. And we're going to close this study session and we'll move on to agenda changes, additions and deletions. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Did want to call attention to the addition to the agenda this evening, item AA1. This is adoption of a resolution related to settlement agreements regarding manufacture and distribution of opioid products. That's the only change, sure, Jen.
That was a very big report, thank you. Now we'll go to public comments on items that are not on this agenda.
Madam Mayor, did you want to make one clarification about the speakers for just general public comments, that they can speak one time?
Can you, will the city attorney make the comments, please?
Sure, happy to. So just to clarify that the public opportunity to speak on the consent agenda covers the whole consent agenda, which is voted on as one item. And exceptions to that are rare and only, you know, appropriate in very special cases only, not as a regular matter.
Thank you so much for the clarification. So we'll just return now to public comments for items not on the agenda. Thank you.
Our first speaker is Debbie Midels.
Okay, I think I have a solution to you guys worrying about the gas problem. It's time to just set a date so that we don't have to worry about gas anymore. And actually, I think I have two data points that would support this. The first is the enthusiastic response of Palo Alto residents to the city's new electric heat pump water heater program. This program had a soft rollout in January. And to help spread the word, I and others in 350 Palo Alto enlisted over 50 volunteers to distribute copies of the city's flyer and stickers to the water heater, reminding residents to plan ahead for switching to electricity before their old water heater dies. We distributed this to about 1,500 Palo Alto homeowners in February and March, talking in person to about 600 people. And as of last week, over 420 people have gone into the city's website and signed up to participate. Well, while we in 350 don't really claim to be responsible for all those people signing up, it's clear that people in Palo Alto do recognize the importance of moving ahead and away from gas, and they're willing to move forward in the transition to electricity. Secondly, amid the concerns about how our changing climate is really creating weather-related problems with outages everywhere, new technologies are emerging to ease the shift away from gas. A story in today's Mercury News, for example, profiles how a couple in the Santa Cruz Mountains who've been through 14 power outages in the past year are using their electric car battery to power all the appliances in their home. Using an inverter that costs $220 from the trunk of their car and a couple of long extension cords, they've been able to power their kitchen and their furnace and their internet router. By such bidirectional charging is no longer just for electrically savvy hobbyists. It's already commercially available in a half dozen vehicles, and more will be coming in 2024. The article gives a quote from Aaron August, the PG&E Vice President, who says PG&E supports this effort, and we're going to be moving more and more towards bidirectional vehicles. So in short, the early adopters are making the switch to electric and large-scale systems are now moving into place. But things will become easier for the early majority as well.
I'm sorry, you are over your time.
Okay, thanks very much.
Our next speaker is Sharia Vardhan, followed by Aram James.
Hi, my name is Sharia Vardhan, and I'm a postdoc in physics at Stanford and a member of 350 Palo Alto. I'm here to talk about the most recent report on climate change from the IPCC and discuss its relevance for Palo Alto. So last month, the Intergovernmental Panel for Climate Change, or IPCC, put out a report that summarizes research on climate change by hundreds of scientists over the last eight years. The city of Palo Alto is a good example of each of the global trends noted in the report, both the positive and the alarming. And it's important for us to pay attention to its warnings and recommendations, especially because we have the technical capacity to do so. According to the report, we have stronger scientific evidence than ever that the increased heat waves, flooding and droughts that are being seen worldwide are a result of greenhouse gas emissions from human activities. None of these extreme weather events are unfamiliar in Palo Alto, and we've seen examples even in the last month. We are currently 1.1 degrees Celsius above pre-industrial temperatures, and the world at temperatures higher than 10s to hundreds of millions of people would suffer from food insecurity and nutrition-related diseases. The number of people exposed to coastal flooding in North America would increase by 71%. At four degrees, the frequency of forest fires will increase by 30% compared to today and the burned area by 50 to 70%. The report also notes that policies to mitigate climate change have expanded considerably over the last decade, and the policies adopted in Palo Alto, such as switching to a carbon-neutral grid, are great examples of this. We must continue to set an example for cities around the world. But according to the report, the current rate of policy action is not sufficient to limit warming to 1.5 degrees or even two degrees. To meet this goal, we need to do much more, and we need to do it as quickly as possible. Currently, global emissions are still increasing, but they need to start decreasing by 2025 at the latest, and that's in less than two years. The report also gives specific data on natural gas emissions. By 2030, they need to decrease by 34% below current levels.
I'm sorry, you are over your time.
Okay.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Aram James, followed by Andrea Gara.
For a very long time, I've seen the wheels, law enforcement wheels, the car is falling apart. Law enforcement is being exposed. We've seen the exposures in Antioch with these, you know, up to 45 officers being involved in this extraordinarily ugly, vile racist text message scandal. We've seen it with the San Jose Police Department over the years, the Santa Clara County Sheriff's Office, and in many, many other places. The dam is about to break for law enforcement in this country. Their credibility is next to zero. And we still have not figured out why five or six officers in Palo Alto filed the Black Lives Matter lawsuit. Why Zach Perona is still on the force? He would have been walked out in many other cities that same day when he made that comment to now Sheriff Marcus Barbour. Yet we've got him here nine years later looking at a raise. We have a police chief that continues, did I should say, thumb his nose at the original rip of data. We've got a rip of data, the next iteration coming out in May, it needs to be an action item. We need to take it seriously. You'll see, I'll bet you that it shows that this department continues to engage in systemic racism. I'm tired tonight. I had a citizen call me the last two days, and I've worked very hard to try to get this person to the right place. Yeah, she's got a really serious complaint, if I understand it correctly, against the Palo Alto Police Department. Whether she'll, this person will file it with the IPA or not, we'll see what happens with it. They're very frightened by their interaction with the Palo Alto Police Department. Bottom line is tasers and canines. The city manager woke the police chief up out of his sleep with his pajama uniform on, so he looked like he was actually on duty last Monday, to shut down Tanaka and Julie Lythka Himes' request that we have a robust discussion on canines and tasers. And it's been shut down. It's an anti-democratic city manager. You all have to face it. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Andrea Gara, followed by Lynn Chiappella.
Hi, I'm speaking on behalf of 350 Palo Alto tonight. In February, a coalition of environmentally concerned organizations asked this council to set a sunset date for natural gas. Since that time, we had a pretty amazing ruling by the Bay Area Air Quality Management District. They passed some new rules that phase out the sales of emission-producing water heaters and furnaces in our area. Those phase outs begin in 2027. Methane gas-powered water heaters and furnaces do not meet the new standards. Those two appliances represent 90% of our natural gas, i.e. methane consumption. It will not be in the best interest of Palo Alto or its residents to maintain our entire gas infrastructure for the remaining 10% of consumption, especially given the environmental health and safety concerns surrounding methane gas use. The new rules set us on a course of building electrification. Palo Alto should name a methane gas sunset date this year. That will give us maximum time to plan ahead and make sure that our most vulnerable community members are not left to shoulder the gas infrastructure costs. Excuse me. Finally, I just wanted to say that there's been a lot of discussion tonight of gas rates. PG&E estimated that without a planned transition, gas bills could increase 10 times to 20 times for customers who are late to make the switch to electric. We could face a similar situation. We need to name a sunset date and make a robust plan. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Lynn Chiappella, followed by Phoebe Moda-Judges.
Good evening. I actually raised my hand to speak on the prior, which was the consent calendar, and somehow didn't, got thwarted, I don't know what happened. But my comments are general, I won't go into the rates exactly. My impression is that the Palo Alto Utilities is more expensive per usage for those who are below the median and less expensive per unit for those who are above the median. I understand talking about averages, but the average doesn't really address the lower income or people who are struggling. The average is the same as having Warren Buffett and his secretary divide their salaries, and that would be the average. So I would appreciate if the median were used rather than the average when you're thinking about some of these expenses. And this was not always the case in Palo Alto. Palo Alto used to have tiers. Particularly, I know the water rates were tiered and were for many years. And I noticed that in other cities, they still do have tiers. And I do think that this should be a consideration. And the tiers are all over the map, but they address the lower-income person or those who are struggling. And those who are very large users pay significantly more per unit than those that use very few units. So I would appreciate some thought given to that by the Utilities Commission and when you're looking at your rates. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Phoebe Moda-Judges, followed by Su Chan.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Phoebe Moda-Judges. I hope you are doing well. I'm here today as a representative of the Palo Alto Student Climate Coalition, or PASK. I joined PASK after experiencing increased climate anxiety after seeing more up close the devastating effects of the storms and flooding here in California earlier this year. I'm very excited that this Friday, April 21st, is the March and Rally for Climate Justice organized by PASK and 350 Silicon Valley Palo Alto with many partner organizations. From 2:30 to 4:00 p.m., there will be a program for children and families. And from 4:00 to 6:30, there will be the protest speakers and food. We invite all of council and the public to join us. With this event, we are striving to promote community engagement, collaboration and unity when it comes to the important climate issues of today and the future. Speaking of which, greenhouse gas emissions reached a new high of 36.8 gigatons in 2022, according to the International Energy Agency. The burning of natural gas releases greenhouse gases, which are major contributors to climate change as well as being climate impact comparable to the carbon dioxide emissions from about 500,000 gasoline-powered cars. With greenhouse gas emissions already rising to dangerous levels, this cannot be overlooked. Toxins released by gas-powered stoves have also been linked to numerous health issues. For these reasons, we urge the city council to set a sunset date to end the flow of natural gas. A shut-off date will set a clear timeline for Palo Alto Utilities and homeowners and speed up the necessary process of electrification. We urge you to provide staff with the necessary resources to determine this date and timeline so we ensure a smooth, stable transition. The importance of transitioning off of natural gas to energy sources that are cleaner, healthier and more reliable will be a huge focus at Friday's rally, and we encourage everyone to come and show their support for a sustainable future. Thank you so much.
Our next speaker is Su Chan, followed by our final speaker, Mark Schultz.
Hello, good evening. We had sent in some slides. Is it possible to pull those up, or should I just continue speaking without? I think they're called Community Health PowerPoint from the Art Center Foundation.
We are pulling them up right now, you can continue.
Okay, I'm just going to start talking. Thank you very much, I don't want to burn through my time. Hello and good evening. I'm from the Palo Alto Art Center Foundation, my name is Su Chan. And we hope that you will join us in celebrating the arts, culture and creativity this month of April. Well, it looks like we're going up. We could advance to slide two. At the Palo Alto Art Center Foundation, we believe that the arts are essential to a thriving, economically vibrant and diverse community. The foundation is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit that expands the reach and impact of the Palo Alto Art Center through fundraising and advocacy. And we are a group of active community volunteers, like myself, committed to providing arts in our community as well. Slide three, today I'd like to highlight a little bit about how the Palo Alto Art Center is contributing to community health in Palo Alto. Next slide, please. Last year, the Art Center presented the exhibition, creative, sorry, Exhibition and Program Series Creative Attention. This initiative was grant-funded by grants from the Institute of Museum and Library Services and the National Endowment for the Arts to the Palo Alto Art Center Foundation. The project included an exhibition, artist residency programs, public programs, virtual meditation programs and art therapy sessions, all provided free to the community. I believe that some of you on the council also attended. The evaluation results from Creative Attention demonstrated the impact of the program in supporting health and well-being. Next slide, please. Building off of this success, the foundation has continued to support arts programs in the community. We provide- We provide a monthly arts program to low-income senior communities at Alto Housing and Stephen Henderson House. This is a testimonial from one of the senior students. Next slide. Thanks to the support of the California Arts Council Grant to the foundation, the Arts Center was also able to provide a series of free art workshops with blind artist Maya Scott to members of the disability community, including a session with Voyager Youth from the Vista Center for the Blind. Hoping I'm doing okay on time. And then finally, our Arts Center Teen Leadership Program has supported teens in Palo Alto, providing them with leadership opportunities through the arts. Thank you so much for your time. And we appreciate the support of the City of Palo Alto as we continue to partner with you on our programs. So the city, thanks for letting me go over time. Good evening.
Our final speaker is Mark Schultz.
Hi, everybody. I hope you can hear me. I would, I think I needed to mention something about the earlier part of the meeting. Me raising my hand wasn't exactly noticed, I think, but whatever. So, you know, I'm looking at the city capital budget costs, the general fund. And, you know, I see that, you know, as a service-driven organization, your salaries and your benefits, and including all the city's proactive pension funding contributions, they represent 60% of the total general fund. Now, if we raise the rate, the gas rate, by, you know, if we raise the gas rate by what is, you know, in prospect, and it is actually possible to reduce everybody's, all of our residents, the price that they pay by 11.6%, you know, that should, that is, that should definitely be done. And if it is actually true that 17% to 20% of our wastewater increases are actually just to be paying for staffing in the City of Palo Alto, I think that that is much too high, and I think that all of our neighbors would agree. I highly oppose all of these increases in utilities expenses. And I'm pretty sure everybody around me is going to agree. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
That concludes public comments.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Now we move to our consent calendar. Do we have any comments from the members of the public for consent calendar items?
Our first speaker is Arim James.
I understand that you all are gonna give this police department a 13% pay raise. I'm opposed to that. This is a department that hasn't got credibility anymore in this community and hasn't for the bulk of the 70 years that I've lived here. Systemic racism is, should not be rewarded. I see from the Daily Post article of Friday, April 7th, that Zach Perone's salary under this proposal will go from $256,792 to $290,174. And then right below that, somebody by the name of Lieutenant Karen Apple will go from 230 to 260. I think that Zach Perone knows this person. Eric Ferguson from 170 to 182. And this is not before we've resolved the racism that came out of the mouth of Zach Perone. So you're gonna reward him for this? And the chief has said that he hasn't excluded Perone from being the next Assistant City Police Chief, the Assistant Chief. He's got April Wagner in the running and James Reif-Schneider, and he still has the possibility that he's gonna bring back Perone and reward him again for this bad behavior, for this racism, this cultural problem in our department. So no, I'm opposed to this. We've got, again, like I've said before, and nobody wants to listen. We've got the Black Lives Matters Six in Palo Alto that's suing, and we don't know why. I can probably guess. We've got an all-white command staff with no suggestion that that's gonna change. We've got the Ripa data being ignored. And you want to give these folks a reward of another 13% increase plus $200 a month? Shame on you, folks.
We have no further requests to speak.
Thank you. So bringing it back to council. I see a light from Councilmember Burt. Did I miss you from earlier? No? Okay, thank you. All right, so I don't see any light, so I'd like to move the consent calendar.
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Burt. And now I see a light from Councilmember Tanaka.
No vote on eight, 10, 11, and 13.
Councilmember Tanaka has registered no votes for eight, 10, 11, 13. All right, shall we take the votes, please?
All right, Councilmember Winker.
Yes.
Councilmember Lowing.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Stone.
Yes.
Councilmember Tanaka.
Yes.
Mayor Koo.
Yes.
Councilmember Burt.
Yes.
Councilmember Lithcote-Haines.
Yes.
Motion carries, seven, zero, except on items eight, 10, 11, and 13. Six to one.
Thank you. Councilmember Tanaka, would you like to speak on your no votes?
Yes, thank you. And if the clerk let me share my screen, that'd be awesome. So let me walk through each one of these. So on item eight, this was to advocate for the taxpayer protection and government accountability or to oppose it. And with the cost of living skyrocketing, I think voters deserve the right to vote on all new taxes. I think it's something which, which is really needed these days, especially in these days of high inflation. On 10, so 10 is the water and wastewater rates. You know, I spoke about this, but, you know, I think we could actually not have these rate increases, even though maybe some of the commodity causes have increases. We could do that by lowering the transfers from our utilities, from our general fund, so we don't have to raise the rates as much. I think we owe our citizens that. I think people are really hurting these days. On 11, so 11, so basically, we are basically, and part of 11, we're giving these six people, oops, these six people here, who, if you look at their average salary and benefits, plus, you know, look at the proactive contribution to long-term pension. So these guys make about $454,000 a year, plus this extra 20K, so it's about $474,000 per year. They're gonna get basically a raise of $67,000 a year. So they'll get a total comp of about $542,000. That's over $500,000. That's a lot of money. Least one money to me. And, you know, so what are these guys' responsibilities? Well, they manage people in this unit, right? So 76 people. So on average, they manage about 12 people each. And, you know, for that level of responsibility, it seems like a lot. This is at a time when many people in our community are struggling. You know, we've been talking about skyrocketing utility rates. We've seen the letters, we've seen the emails, we've seen people calling in about sky-high utility rates. Then we talked tonight about how this is gonna continue, maybe not quite as severe, but still not good. We've seen the massive layoffs, and we've seen bank failures, like our local Silicon Valley bank. And so I just think we need to be a lot more mindful and thoughtful. And the second thing is, if you look at this, let's see, oh man, I don't know, I lost my screen. But if you look at the long-range financial forecast, you know, staff has projected that our expenses, right, our total expenditures for our general fund would be, I can't really do this well, but 1.4%. It's hard for me to make this big, 1.4%. And so every time we go, we give increases way beyond that, we have to ask ourselves, so where does this extra money come from? Is it our ratepayers? Is it fees that people are paying? Is it less services for something else? Where does this money come from when we do this? So I think, I think that's really important for us to think about. And then on 13, you know, I think that lease agreement for the Roth building, I think the Roth building could, I think we should invest in the future. I understand we want, we want to kind of celebrate our past, but I think we should be the city of the future, as we want to invest in things that help our future. So I'd much rather see like a youth center there than a museum. And so I can't support number 13 as well. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember, oh, sorry, not Councilmember, city manager comments.
Thank you, Mayor. Let me ask the city clerk for assistance with the slides. Let's go to the next slide, please. Just a few items to provide updates for the council and community tonight. Thank you. All right, first off, to note resources that are available for community members related to mental health and wellness. Start off by thanking our Palo Alto Youth Council for hosting an event yesterday at Mitchell Park Community Center, really focused on resources available to our youth as well as the community more generally. On the latter, let me note that as the city council received a report and made a special order a couple of weeks ago, there is the county's new program, Trust, which is accessed through the number 988. Clearly, a program that's still in the formative stages, but is rolling out and part of the suicide and crisis lifeline provided through Santa Clara County. We also have our Project Safety Net, which is a clearinghouse among organizations to provide resources both directly as well as through other organizations. Our Children's Youth Council, providing a number of services directly and focused on family and youth. And Alcove, relatively new addition to our community resources for mental health support for young people aged 12 through 25. A number, or all of these resources are available through our website. But again, would like to remind our community of these resources available here in Palo Alto. Next slide, please. As it is Earth Week and Earth Day coming up this week, as we've heard from a number of our speakers, would note that we have several events planned throughout this coming week, including Friday at the March and Rally for Climate Justice, which will be here at City Hall, as well as a number of events shown here on Saturday, the 22nd, as well as our Earth Day photo contest on April 30th. All of the information here is on our webpage, citypalalto.org/earthday, a nice single source for information on a variety of events. Next slide, please. And as tonight was a bit of an opening specific to utilities, but then on the upcoming weeks, we have discussions of the budget as a whole, largely, in all likelihood, focused on our general fund. We do have a general update on city finances that was posted on medium.com here, palo alto, sorry, palo alto connect dot medium dot com, as well as a number of sessions coming up with the city council as a whole, as well as the finance committee. With, starting off with the May 1st council presentation on the proposed budget. And on May 5th and 9th, the finance committee do plan on May 22nd, a report back, something of a status report on the work done by the finance committee to the full council. And then we are still finalizing dates for general public information sessions that members of the community can ask questions as well as receive an overall presentation themselves. And that is planned for early next month. Next slide, please. Then also wanted to highlight a couple of specific topics that are coming up for community meetings on this Thursday at 6:30 p.m. at Duvernack Elementary School. This is in conjunction with the San Francisco Guido Creek Joint Powers Authority, as well as our Partner Cities, on the status of San Francisco Guido Creek Reach Two Projects or upcoming channel projects along San Francisco Guido Creek. And then second, our ongoing evaluation and project development at our Car Free Streets on Ramona and California Avenue. This is a virtual community meeting next Thursday on the 27th of April. Next slide, please. And finally, just note the upcoming items for the council agenda. Next week, you have commission interviews, the second set of interviews for your current commission openings, as well as a study session on safe routes to school. And coming back for final approval, at least as a snapshot in time, the council procedures and protocols document. May 1st, I just described, also have a public hearing on the, a proposed project at 2147 Yale Street. Then, as we look forward, the housing element on May 8th in joint session with the Planning and Transportation Commission. May 15th will be your Sustainability and Climate Action Plan coming back for final adoption and a legislative discussion and a number of items scheduled through May and into June. That completes my report. Mayor, back to you.
Thank you. If, I think we'll take a five-minute break and return in five minutes. Madam Clerk, are we ready to go back to council? Okay, we're going to reconvene council meeting. And now we're going into our action items. Action item number 14 is a public hearing for the adoption of a resolution approving the fiscal year 2024 Gas Utility Financial Plan, including proposed reserve and general fund transfers and amending the gas utility reserve management practices and increasing gas rates by amending rate schedules. And staff?
Good evening, council members. Jonathan Abencine, Assistant Director, Utilities. I have only a few short slides here today, and we really covered them in the study session. So I'll just recap here that we what we have proposed tonight is an 8% increase in the gas utility rates proposed. In the overall bill, that's driven by a 21% increase in the distribution rates. As we discussed earlier, the those rate increases are driven by two things. First off, we saw significant cost increases over the last several years, especially in construction inflation and getting back to our usual levels of investment. And and other other inflation. And then there is a contribution from the fact that our reserves are very low and they need to be recovered over the next several years. I get the next slide, please. We talked about this slide where in the study session, we're seeking some feedback, seeing a decision from the council on the general fund amount. The amount to transfer to the general fund. We have two alternatives modeled. Next slide. This provides some additional information about those two potential alternatives. And next slide. And this is a staff recommendation. I'll just recap that both the UAC and the Finance Committee recommended this motion. There was one dissenting vote on the Finance Committee and a dissenting vote unrelated to the gas transfer, the general fund transfer on the Utilities Advisory Commission. So that's my presentation. I hope to answer any questions.
Thank you. Let's go to a general public.
We have no request to speak.
All right, we'll come back to council. I think a lot of the questions we have taken in the study session as well as comments.
We looks like we do have one public comment from Mark Schultz.
Okay, sure.
If that's okay.
Yes, absolutely. Two minutes, please.
Okay, I don't exactly need two minutes here. One thing I forgot to mention about the the utilities increase is that my bill at 426 Palo Alto Avenue was $1,430 last month. My bill this month is $1,114. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Does that conclude? Thank you, Madam Clerk. All right, so if we have any questions or comments and even a motion, please. Yes, please light it up. Councilmember Bird, thank you.
So first, I did want to ask staff to review something that we discussed in quite a bit of detail at the Finance Committee, which is the various programs to support low income ratepayers. So could you refresh us on those programs?
Sure. So we one of the things we did immediately was set up a when they when the high gas bills arrived was set up an opportunity, first off, not all of the costs were passed through to residents. So we absorbed some of that with reserves. We set up an opportunity for folks who are having trouble paying all in one month to pay off over six to eight months. We have also, the council has also initiated rebates and for both gas and electric utilities. And I believe I have a colleague, Dave Yen, who can speak to that if there's detailed questions on that. And then we also have, we've been offering free home efficiency evaluations, and there has been some significant uptake. Our energy evaluator is is our energy advisor is working at full tilt right now. And then we also have the the rate assistance program and the the free home energy upgrades for income qualified folks and all of these things, while they don't necessarily help retroactively, for those who help sign up, it can help defray the costs of utility bills going forward and maybe mitigate some of the impacts on the pocketbook from what happened over the winter.
Thank you. And I also just want to reiterate one of the points that was made earlier, which is that our our gas rates are currently at 11% below PG&E. Is that correct?
Average for the year. Yeah, that was calendar year 2022.
And do we have projections on PG&E's rates for 2024 versus ours?
We for for 2023 or 2024, we don't, because their rates like ours are pretty dependent on gas market prices, and they are a large enough buyer that their gas rates are a little bit different than ours.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. I can add that I've heard from my colleague, all rate assistance customers will receive $200 in electric and gas rebates. So that should go some ways towards helping to defray those high winter bills.
Thank you.
That's in the RAP, R A P one?
Yes, I'm sorry. I should have said our income qualified customers in in the rate assistance program, the RAP program.
Okay, and I guess also in the staff report, it also states, you know, for the rebates that for the January bill, if it's less than 400 for the gas and less than 300 for electric, there's a rebate of $90. And if it is a high January bill, which is over the eight, if it's greater than $800 for gas and 500 for electric, they'll get a rebate of 165. So just wanted to make sure we add that in there. Okay. Anything, anybody else? With that, we can go for a motion. So I'll move it. I'll move the staff recommendation as well as the Finance Committee's recommendation.
I will second that.
I don't have any comments to it. I think we spoke a lot about it.
I'll just add that in the study session, for those who weren't tuned in, we we really had very extensive discussions on this, following up on two real extensive Finance Committee meetings. And these are rate adjustments that are really necessary to begin to replenish the drawdown in our reserves that were used to mitigate virtually all rate increases the previous two years during the pandemic and and we now have moderate adjustments that are necessary, but our our gas utility rates are still 11% below PG&E. And I think that's quite an accomplishment. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Stone.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I support the motion. I think I'll just offer a friendly amendment on D to change it to transferring up to 18%. As I, as I mentioned, both in the in the study session, I think about 60 cents more a month in order to give us flexibility in the budget for about 1.2 million. Seems like a reasonable trade off to me.
And remind me what you said earlier at the study session, that can we go back and revisit that at the January, at the June meeting?
Yes, we believe we believe that that should be, that should be fine. Certainly, we can manage our our public outreach to reflect, you know, to be to be a little circumspect about the exact numbers. And we've heard from the the attorney didn't didn't see a major issue with it. We do want to double check with our with our utility attorney as well, but.
I just wanted to find out from our finance folks, staff, if they would have determined by then what is needed for the for the whether it is sufficient for the transfer in the general fund to to accommodate all the services that we were allocating these funds for. So if we can find out whether that is something that we can determine by the next time we revisit this.
I wasn't sure, Mayor, if you meant by your question, finance folks as in staff or finance folks as in Finance Committee?
Oh, I'm sorry, finance staff folks as in staff.
So in terms of how this will proceed, I believe that as the Finance Committee does its work, it will have a much clearer picture as to the gap, should there be one between the services that the council or the committee would like to recommend and the revenues available. So that would really be through the discussions that will occur in early May.
Okay, so so if 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 we're able to revisit that later and finance staff will have better understanding of what we may need and what the gap is, then I am okay with the 18% for item D.
Can I just ask a quick question of staff?
Yeah.
To see what's easier from staff's perspective, I guess from a utility staff's perspective, is it easier to have the 18% approved by council now and then be able to roll that back to 15.5? Or to be 15.5 now and request it be increased to 18% later?
Vice Mayor Stone, I believe that probably it would be easier to take the 18% now. And the reason for that is, is at least at that point, we're able to communicate out to the public of exactly what was voted on tonight. And if there's a decision to reduce it, because the magnitude of difference from the general fund is unnecessary for those dollars, then we can go back and send that message back out again as well.
Great. That was my feeling as well. Thank you.
Councilmember Bird, are you okay with the?
No, I'm not. And I can either speak to the why not now or after that comes in as a an amendment. I'll just say that I, as I, we discussed in the Finance Committee, I think it's really important that we communicate to the public that we have really understood the hardship of this huge spike in gas prices and that we are demonstrating to them that we're managing costs as well as we can through this transition period. And that I believe that the ratepayers trust in us having those kinds of diligent concerns about their rate impacts is going to be very important for continue to have the the public endorsement and trust as we move forward in our really important climate initiatives and that that we are doing all that we can to assure that we can make a successful transformation to electrification without undue hardship on ratepayers. And I think this is a signal that we we are concerned about their impacts. And I I think even though the the financial impacts are not massive one way or the other, I think it's a very important communication to our our ratepayers at this time. And that we could, if we in the budget cycle end up seeing that we believe that this is crucial to being able to provide certain services and choose to make that choice at that time, we can do so then. But at this time, I I want to stay with the 15 and a half.
So do we make this as an unfriendly amendment?
I'll make it as an unfriendly amendment.
Yeah, I don't have the second.
So Mayor Kusso, the maker and the second are have agreed to to make the motion at 18%. Is that correct?
No, the second has not.
Yeah, the second has not.
Oh, the second is not. So then that is an amendment. That's correct. It's, Madam Clerk, it's not a substitute motion. It's an amendment.
And it would be Vice Mayor Stone making the amendment? And it would be Vice Mayor Stone making the amendment? And I'll second it. And we'll see where that goes.
Great. Thank you, Madam Mayor. And yeah, just kind of briefly, I mean, I'm in agreement with the logic of Councilmember Burt. And I agree with the importance of us showing that we're being good fiscal stewards of these rates. That's why I think, I think our taxpayers will, would understand a 60-cent increase on a monthly bill and giving us that additional flexibility to address so many of the city services that the community deeply values. I think that's a reasonable trade-off. And great to hear from the Utilities Department, too. If we don't need that money next month, much easier to roll it back in this way.
Right. I'm basically the same in terms of, given the opportunity of finding out from staff what the gap is or if there's no gap, so just for more information. But for the most part, I do, I'm okay with the original motion at 15.5% also. Councilmember Lithcote Hames?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I am against the amendment primarily for procedural reasons. I'm really impressed by the fact that the UAC voted for 15.5%, as did we on finance. So I sort of feel like we're kind of attempting to undo some recommendations that were made by two bodies. We do our best to listen to. We don't always. And it is important for us to sit up here and interrogate and investigate and so on. But as a matter of process, whether it's Finance or PTC, I mean, Policy and Services, sorry. I think we want to give some deference to the decisions that bubble up from our own body. Finance had a lot more time with this information. We spent hours on this. This is the recommendation we came to. It did happen to be two to one. I very much respect the Vice Mayor always and appreciate the argument he's making. This is, it's a judgment call. It's a balance. And I come down on the side of the public perception, how we narrate to this. 15.5 feels like the right percentage as between the two, given the kind of year we've had, all told. And that's what I'll be voting in favor of. Thanks.
Councilmember Lowing?
Yes, I concur with the 15.5 and was just going to add that we should honor the UAC's decision on this because they also dig into it. We're going to obviously get a second bite at this apple. But I think, you know, coming down from that to 18% is good discipline even going forward. So it's good to start now.
Councilmember Winker?
Thank you, Mayor Koo. I want to thank the Vice Mayor for raising this because I had been wondering the same thing about, you know, the cumulative impact on the budget if we transfer less versus the individual impact. And, you know, it's a compelling case, but my concern is that we're calling this a 15.5% transfer. And since it's just a one-year thing we're voting on, it is. But the idea between, behind alternative two is to have the main, is to continue the historical, at least as I understand it, and the finance people can correct me if I'm wrong, is to kind of continue the historical practice of staying with sort of CPI and going with that 2.3% and sort of modulating the impact of the spike we just observed. So that it's actually a 15.5% proposed for 2024, but then down to 11% for 2025 and 12.9% for 2026. So I'm concerned that if we don't start following this precedent now, it's going to be even harder to go from 18 to 11 next year if that's what we choose to do. And I think because of the substantial impact on many of our most vulnerable, you know, I'm disinclined to go with alternative one in the out years. And thus, with respect and thanks to the mayor and vice mayor, I think that I will not be supporting the amendment. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, counting votes, I'll withdraw my motion.
Okay, very good. Councilmember Tanaka, so we've, a motion has been, the amendment to the, thank you. Councilmember Tanaka?
Yeah, I was going to speak on it, but it's withdrawn. So I'll just speak in general. Definitely think the lower transfer rate is the appropriate thing, but I'll speak to the motion as a whole. And our community's been through a lot. You know, we all seen the emails and we just had the last caller saying, you know, 1,000-plus utility bill. It's a lot of money. That's in some places people's mortgages. And I know people like to compare our utility rates against PG&E and say, oh, we're lower. But it's, to me, the argument doesn't hold because we bought our utilities. We put capital into our utilities. We invest capital upfront. We strong the wires. We buried the wires. We did all that stuff. We own the distribution within our city. And so very much like if you buy a house and you pay for the house, you don't have a monthly fee per se. Yes, you have maintenance, but you don't have, you're not paying rent. If you're renting utilities, let's say, Mount Lake Mountview, and you're renting from PG&E, you know, PG&E has a market cap of $45 billion. Of course, that's because it's all state of California. That has some market value. I mean, just like if we were to spend our own utilities, it would also have market value, maybe not 45 billion, but it'd be worth something. And so we should inherently have a lower cost utility, rate utility than PG&E because the other cities are renting it. And I've tried to explain this before, but I'm obviously not doing a very good job in terms of explaining it. But anyway, so I would expect to see a lower rate. I, in general, can support, well, I think the 15% is better than 18%. I can't support this direction because I think what we should do is lower the transfer rate to the point where we really don't have to have an increase. You know, and I know this is directly lowering it, but I mean, I'm talking about going back to where it was before all the increases and so that people can get some relief. And so, well, I think this is better than, you know, than then, and it still doesn't go far enough. Thanks.
All right. I don't see any more lights. Madam Clerk, will you take the vote, please?
Vice Mayor Stone?
Yes.
Councilmember Burt?
Yes.
Councilmember Winker?
Yes.
Councilmember Lithcote Hames?
Yes.
Mayor Koo?
Yes.
Councilmember Tanaka?
No.
Councilmember Lowing?
Yes.
Motion carries 6-1.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We, that closes and concludes item number 14. We'll move to item number 15, which is another public hearing, adoption of a resolution approving the fiscal year 2024 Electric Utility Financial Plan and Proposed Reserve Transfers, Deactivating the Utility Rate Schedule, E-HRA, and Amending Utility Rate Schedules. Hello? Are you ready for your presentation?
Thank you, Mike Babett, Resource Planner. We do have a presentation. It's very short. It is the recommendation. So, next slide. And it's just a recap of what you have in the staff report, but it's approving the FY24 Financial Plan as well as the transfers listed on this slide. And there's one more slide, the recommendation as well. Deactivating the hydroelectric rate adjuster and increasing the retail electric rates by 21% across all of our rate classes. And that's the recommendation, so.
Thank you. Do we have any public speakers on this?
No requests to speak.
Thank you. Okay, back to council for questions, comments, and motion. Councilmember Lowing?
Yeah, I just had a question on the funding plan about what looks like a bond measure at about 200 million. Is that sort of plug numbers or is that getting ready to become a proposal or what?
Yeah, we've conducted an initial assessment for grid modernization costs. And the outcome of that study suggests that it would cost between 200 and 300 million dollars. So this financial plan has 300 million dollars built in, but that will last longer than five years that this covers. So if you just look at the forecast of five years, it shows 200 million in funding, but we have another 100 million in years beyond FY28.
Okay, and you're using it in 2024 to begin with, so that's getting teed up now?
That's correct.
Okay. And then I just had one question on one slide that I'm not sure I'm understanding, which is packet page 606. Maybe you have the colored slide that I'll be able to read it better, but it looks like electric uses continues to go down?
Yeah, that's correct. We've, over the last 20 years, we've seen a number of commercial and industrial customers leave Palo Alto service territory. In addition to that, there's energy efficiency ongoing, so, you know, more efficient lighting. And so we've just been seeing the impact of that for the last two decades.
Yeah, the reason I was surprised is that the upswing on electric vehicles is just so high and we're so significant as a city. I thought that might start to give it a blip upwards. And as you're forecasting, I thought you might make some guesstimates about where it's going, which eventually we have to do in order to plan the grid and everything else around it, including even the bond measure, so.
We, we've looked at a couple of different load scenarios as part of our electrification work plan. And I think we're expecting to see some amount of load growth. We're a bit conservative in that it probably won't take off and reach kind of the full state until 2030, 2035. But we have a little bit of load growth expected over the five years of this financial plan.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Councilmember Burt?
Yes, well, first, I wanted to follow on to Councilmember Lowing's question on that demand. Tonight's not the occasion to go into a deeper dive on the assumptions that are there, but I share his concerns that these projections don't seem to really embrace what we've, are looking at, at a wholesale transformation of our transportation system to electrification and what is likely to be an accelerated pace of that in just the next few years because of just the tipping point that is occurring on electric vehicles and their costs and their availability. And then the electrification of commercial and residential buildings. And that we've looked at, I thought a 40% increase in electricity demand is what I thought I had heard. So I think we need to have that discussion. Probably the first place to have it would be both Utilities Commission and the SCAP AdHoc Committee. But I really have my own skepticism about those projections. And then before going ahead and making a motion, I just want to reiterate again that the, with, even with these changes and even with the need to rebuild our depleted reserves, we're still far below PG&E. And we like PG&E, own our own distribution infrastructure. We pay PG&E what the rates that the CPUC has set for transmission charges that are understood to be fair rate costs recovery for PG&E on providing transmission. And it's a lot of money that we pay for that. And so I think fundamentally, these are really valid comparisons. I believe I need to slightly correct my colleague. It's not a 40% below PG&E that we're at right now. Did you say it was 46, John? Did I get that right?
That's what we had for the last calendar year, yeah.
46% below PG&E on residential rates. I just want to make sure that we really appreciate how significant that is. That's almost mind-boggling. All right. On that note, I will move the set of staff recommendations that, and adopt the Resolution in Attachment A. And let's see, I see they're all teed up here in writing. Second. And I think we've had a full discussion on this, and I don't have anything more to add.
Okay, we can take the votes. Oh, wait, just a minute. Councilmember Tanaka's light just came on.
Yeah, the only one I could vote for is 4A, so split that out and.
Which one did you want to split out?
4A.
Madam City Attorney, 4A is part, there's a whole bunch of stuff underneath that.
It's not separable, Madam Mayor and Councilmember Tanaka. They are linked together, many of these items.
Councilmember Tanaka wanted to separate 4A, but they all are together, so we can't. Unless you want to move, you want to just vote on 4ABCDE separately, Councilmember Tanaka?
We can't consider them separately because, yes, approving or not approving A impacts B, et cetera. So they can't be separated from each other.
Okay. All right, so we can go ahead and take the vote, please.
Councilmember Lowing?
Yes.
Councilmember Tanaka?
No.
Mayor Koo?
Yes.
Councilmember Winker?
Yes.
Councilmember Burt?
Yes.
Councilmember Lithcote Hames?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Stone?
Yes.
Motion carries 6-1.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And that concludes item number 15. I just want to say thank you to all of the staff. And have a good evening. Okay, now we go to Councilmember questions, comments, and announcements. I see no lights. Okay. And I want to say it's 10:18. We are adjourned.